Good afternoon and welcome to the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. And if you're appearing today before the commission, please introduce yourself and your client, and spell your names for our commission's reporter. Commissioners, I see we have some minutes for action.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the regular and executive session minutes of the first meeting and the regular minutes of the third meeting as previously circulated.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. The regular and executive session minutes of the first meeting and the regular minutes of the third meeting are approved. Moving into license applications, these are special license applications. Application number 20-20108-1 through 20-20108-30 inclusive from Uncle NY. I'm assuming that's New York Pub and Grill.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. That's not New York Yankees now, right? Mr. Uyoka? Thank you, Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is owner Kelly Nascarella. That's spelled N-A-S-C-A-R-E-L-L-A. We have no changes to this investigative report.
That's a nice Irish name. Commissioner?
Ms. Cole, you folks are asking for daily operation, daily service from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You folks are gonna start serving at 6:00 a.m.?
On Saturday and Sunday, we expect to because of the fall. Other than that, we don't expect to have anyone ordering alcohol.
Okay. And this is, could you have a note, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Have you folks opened already? When you plan an opening?
September 2nd.
Okay. And then you're gonna provide meals from 6:00 a.m., including the weekends?
I'm sorry, can you...
Are you gonna provide meals during the weekend football?
Yes, we'll have food service available the entire time we're open.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is all enclosed, right, Ms. Cole?
Yes, it's all enclosed. There is a patio area which is partially enclosed. Yeah, it's got a rail that comes up the side and then on the other end, and then it has a rope chain that stops customers from going up and down the staircase.
How big is this patio area?
200 square feet.
Okay. You folks intend to have patrons in that area from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.?
No, we're not gonna open up the patio until 9:00 a.m., and it will be closed at 10:00 p.m.
Okay, thank you. We do wanna be mindful of neighbors, yeah. It can get very noisy and having it being outdoors, we don't wanna have too much problems.
Certainly.
Motion to approve application number 20-20108-1 through 20-20108-30 inclusive.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, applications number 20-20108-1 through 20-20108-30 inclusive are approved. Good luck.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Calling, oh, hold on just a minute. I'm sorry.
No, it was double printed.
Huh?
It's the same one.
Uh, Ms. Typer?
It's double printed, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much, I share. Calling agenda item number two, application number 20-20284 from Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi. We have no changes to this investigative report.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, this is for a grand opening celebration.
I see that you folks will have minors in attendance.
Correct.
What's your folks' plan to prevent service to minors?
We're gonna ban everyone over 21, and we have rolling security.
And you're expecting about 300 people? Any questions, Commissioner? Motion to approve application number 20-20284.
Second.
They're moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application 20-20284 is approved. And for the record, I misspoke, Mr. Kara. This is for Aloha Panel. Sorry about that. Calling agenda item number three, application number 20-20285 from Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi, manager. We have no changes to this report either.
This is for Bishop Museum Private Party.
Questions? Motion to approve application number 20-20285.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number 20-20285 is approved.
Thank you.
Moving into the preliminary hearings, calling agenda item number four, application number 19-16252 from Podmore LLC. Mr. Gota.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neil Gota appearing on behalf of Podmore LLC. To my right is Catherine Nomura, member. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Merchant Street. What was here before?
It was a small little store.
It was, yeah, the little general store part of that. It was where Cafe Bonbon was many years ago.
Corner of Merchant and Alakia.
And this is for, you folks are gonna have music and dancing?
No, it'll be French and cocktails.
Any questions? Motion to approve application number 19-16252.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number 19-16252 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Calling agenda item number five, application number 19-16722 from TK World LLC. Ms. Wu.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Min Young Woo on behalf of TK World LLC. On my right is Takuro Ino, T-A-K-U-R-O-I-N-O, member. Any original questions?
Thank you very much.
You folks are gonna have cats there?
Yes, we love cats.
And, Mr. Ino?
Yes.
I see that you don't have any experience in the sale or service of alcohol.
No.
It's your first time?
Yes.
Are you, you intend to hire anyone that has experience?
Yes, I do, already.
You do already?
Yes.
So you hired a manager or...
Yes.
Okay. There's a lot of rules to follow.
Right.
So, please make sure you're aware of all the rules and that you become familiar with them.
Thank you.
Motion to approve application number 19-16722.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number five, application number 19-16722 is approved. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Moving into requests, agenda item number six, request number 20-20057 from HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company, DBA Gate 7 and 8 Snack Bar. Mr. Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is your I, Robert Uyoka, on behalf of HSI Honolulu Joint Venture Company. Present to my right, Mr. Rick Jauer. He's the Director of Food and Beverage Operations. First name R-I-C-K, last name K-A-U-E-R-T. This involves renovations with adding a new dining area, kinda reducing a dining area at the Honolulu International Airport.
Thank you very much. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, request number 20-20057.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, request number 20-20057 is approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Uyoka. We're six and a half games from a wild card.
Good walk-off win today.
We need some divine intervention.
How was the hurry today?
I got on the right plane coming.
That's half, that's half the battle, Mr. Uyoka. Oh, God, that's funny. Calling agenda item number seven, request number 20-20316 from TNU and, excuse me, TU and H DBA, the Ginza Nightclub Lime Light Karaoke Restaurant. Commissioner Mishu.
Yes, Chair. I refuse to conflict of interest.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Keith Kyuchi. For the licensee, to my right is Desmond Lee, L-E-E. He's the Officer and Director of the licensee.
Thank you. Nice seeing you again.
This is a request to break down the fine $7,100 into five equal payments. I should note, there's one other decision order coming in that's $1,000. The reason that's delayed, that was the contested hearing. So we'll just pay that when it comes within the, within the applicable period. So the payment plan only applies to the $7,100 that the decision and orders already concerned.
And what was the payment planned again, Mr. Kyuchi?
$1,420 a month, beginning tomorrow. So it's on the 23rd of each month, yeah. The reason we suggest tomorrow, we wanted to show the commission that, you know, Mr. Lee's acting good faith, he's willing to make a payment as soon as possible.
Appreciate that. We appreciate that.
And Mr. Kyuchi, can you, can you assert to the commission that the issues which caused the violations have been remedied at this premises?
They have, in fact, before the adjudication hearing, I talked to Mr. Lee twice. We had two separate meetings. The primary issue with two of the violations, you're underage, was that the promoter had done under 21 as well as 21 and over. So he's gonna cease that immediately. The other violations are mostly with staff. I talked to Mr. Lee about that. Those have been remedied as well.
So, in order to pre, in order to ensure that only 21 and over patrons are allowed into the premises, is this for all, during all times of operation, or is it just for events?
No, it's all times of operation, but the only time that he would allow anybody under 21 was for events, but that's changed. So it's, if it's gonna be 21 and over all the time.
Okay.
Because he does have a staff, he does have doormen. And part of the issue, if you recall, was that the doormen were, did not get their liquor card, and they have all gotten their liquor cards since.
That's what I was alluding to.
Yeah.
So you folks are now going to be carding at the door?
Yes.
At all hours of operation?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. Okay. Thank you very much. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action?
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve, request number 20-20316.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number seven, request number 20-20316 is approved for the amount of the payment plan represented by legal counsel.
Thank you. And just to, just to let the commission know, I have two adjudication matters that are being continued, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can we have Commissioner Mishu back, please? Calling agenda item number eight, request number 20-20326 from Kawai Loa Tavern LLC.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon. Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Michael Sweetman for Kawai Loa Tavern LLC. To my right is Moana Lane. Her last name's L-A-N-E, manager at Kawai Loa Tavern.
Thank you. Commissioners?
So this is a three-part request?
A two-part request, I think, unless, unless you interpret a third part, but we're also agenda item number 10.
Correct.
And, and if I may, just, our request is that, twofold really. One is, back in May, our request for a 90-day trial license for live entertainment, live music was denied. And so our request is to reconsider that in light of some of the, in light of the letter that I sent to the commission, and also to reconsider some of the restrictions that are placed on our, the use of our outside area.
So counsel, excuse me, let's handle agenda item number eight, because agenda item number 10 is different.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so let's handle these, request by request, right?
Yes, sir. So, our request there is to loosen or eliminate the restrictions on our use of the outdoor area. We haven't had any issues with compliance, and that is a sort of important space, space for us. I understand that at the last hearing, there was an issue with some disconnect. I reviewed the video, I wasn't here for the last hearing, but the commission was concerned with there being a little bit of disconnect between management and the establishment. And so we've taken some steps to, to address that, through training.
Let me just state for the record, the commission's concern is always the safety of the general public. And unfortunately, the location of this licensed premises is right next to the highway.
Yes, sir.
Correct? We brought that to your attention. And the, the entrance and the exit is from behind the licensed premises, correct? And that was our concern, when the inability, some facts were misrepresented to this commission as far as barriers and, I believe it was shrubbery, that separated the licensed premises from Kamehameha Highway.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
That is our concern, just to give you a, a history, because I believe you were not representing this client at that time.
That's right.
I would also like to interject that this is not Waikiki. This is Haleiva. There are residents in the area, and we do, we are a public commission, so we have to take into account how late things are happening in that area and the noise levels. Because what we don't want is an angry public because of all the noise coming from these establishments.
Yes, ma'am.
And when people are consuming alcohol, they tend to get louder. And there's entertainment outside, they tend to get louder. And we've had issues in this area with other establishments being too loud for the residents' enjoyment.
Yes.
Okay, so with those concerns in mind, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. And, and of course, we absolutely appreciate the commission's mission to, to protect the public and to protect against sort of nuisances in that area.
Thank you.
So, so one thing to highlight is that we are set back from the highway by a couple of establishments. So the establishment that's right on the highway is a bank. But we are in the same building, and then there's another restaurant, and then there is our establishment. So our establishment actually opens up onto a parking lot. If you're familiar with the area, By the Longs Drugs, in the, it opens up to a, to a parking lot that faces away from the highway. So pedestrian traffic is, along the highway is not as big a concern as it is the pedestrian traffic going directly out into the parking lot, which of course is a concern. So we do have, on the weekends, we have two security guards employed to make sure that everything on the patio is, is handled appropriately. And, and we've also, you know, since the last hearing, done some compliance training with our staff, just sort of trying to make sure that compliance is in the forefront of everyone's minds, making sure that it's, everyone understands it's their responsibility to make sure that, that, you know, we're keeping the, the commission's same, same purposes in mind, I guess, which is safety and protecting against nuisances. We haven't had any noise complaints or violations that I'm aware of, and in fact, the, the investigation rated us, when we, when we submitted our 90-day trial, rated us as fair. I think we would've been good, except that when the doors are open, of course, noise can, noise can escape out into the area. But we are set back a pretty good distance because the parking lot's there and because Long's is, is, gives us a buffer. There aren't residents immediately in the area, although that is, that is definitely a concern. And our plan right now is to have, like Hawaiian sort of background, not background music, but Hawaiian, not, not extremely loud like techno music or anything like that, one night a week, inside, with the doors closed. So I think that it's unlikely that we would have noise complaints or noise violations.
You folks are asking to have consumption outdoors after 10:00 p.m.? That's the first condition that you're looking to have as a lead, correct?
That's right, that's right. Just, and a lot of times, we close down out there at 10:00 p.m. midday, but we'd like to have, be able to sort of have that be an internal control, because on weekend nights, it is a nice area to be able to permit consumption and sit outside and enjoy a drink outside on picnic tables.
Do you have a copy of the plans that were submitted to us? I believe this, they didn't have an outdoor rate deck kind of that?
It does, yes, sir.
I think it was different than the one that was mentioned, but, yeah, we don't have anything in front of us.
Oh, I apologize. I thought that they were here. I do have a copy of the, of the plans. Can I hand it to the commissioner? Sorry.
So you'll see the highlighted, I have another, I have a larger.
Thank you. You'll see the highlighted sort of funny, awkwardly shaped area outside of the bar is the, is the patio deck. I would, I would estimate it to be about 150, 100, maybe 100 square feet.
Our other concern is, yes, regress, regress. How are you controlling people coming in and out of that patio area? Because you do have the option of coming in through the establishment, but you also have, you know, this area where it's not barricaded really, there's no gate or anything. And what about people, especially underage people, coming in through that entrance?
That, that is a concern, absolutely. And we, well, the underage piece is not as much a concern, because we do card, you know, when you're buying, when you're buying drinks. So that piece isn't as much of a concern, but it is a concern for us that you can go around the patio and go past those other establishments, past the bank, out to the highway. And that we have to manage, just, that's why we have to have two security guards on duty on weekend nights, because we're a little bit busier out there, and we have to have someone who can...
No, this is the parking lot.
What is, what is behind the, the Russian? Was there residential development behind there?
Um, when you say...
On the top?
Yes, sir. So that first is parking lot. So immediately where the, where that white space is on the drawing, that's all a parking lot.
That's this area?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And then there aren't any residences until, so that's a big parking lot, because it's also Long's parking lot, and so there aren't any residents for maybe 200 feet. More than that?
Yeah.
Maybe 300 feet, Commissioners, sorry.
So you don't intend to have consumption outdoors past 10:00 p.m. more than one or two nights a week?
Well, we'd like is, is on the weekends, for sure. I mean, what we'd like to have is, is for the commission to remove the restrictions and allow us to internally police it, but completely understand, if, if we can't go that far, then just, yeah, like Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights, if we could have the restriction loosened, and then during the week, it's not as big a concern. Only because oftentimes, I think the staff prefers to shut that area down by 10:00 p.m. or so anyway.
We understand that enforcement was out there a few times. I was wondering if we could hear from them? On how everything is going?
Catherine Fontaine, Acting Enforcement Supervisor. So, since May 15th, investigators have done a total of five inspections at Kawai Loa Tavern, and Kawai Loa Tavern has received three warnings and three violations in that time.
Can you enlighten us as to what the violations were for?
Sure. Quality of liquor, unregistered bartender, and music, dancing, entertainment. That was for beer pong.
What about the warnings?
The warnings? Last night, they received a warning for manager's card not readily available. They were issued a warning for electronic time cards without prior approval, and for time records, no last name.
The warning is discretionary with investigator as opposed to citing the licensing?
All right.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioners, if I was not familiar, could we repeat the three warnings?
Manager's card not readily available. Electronic time cards without prior approval. And time records, the employee did not have a last name on the time record.
Any other concerns? Or observations?
Well, during our inspections, investigators did not find liquor being consumed in any of the unauthorized areas.
Thank you. Can we please hear from Mr. Sato as well?
Supervising Investigator Daniel Sato.
Can you provide some additional information for the commission as to this establishment?
Maybe if I can, Mr. Sato. I know the first time that the applicant came before us, they had a much detailed drawing that specifically pointed out Kamehameha Highway and the areas.
So as far as the premises is concerned, I know it's on the backside of the other premises. That was the concern about the roadway, Omar Road, so.
Okay. Thank you for the correction.
Yeah. And there, there was that outside area, I do believe, that was not a part of the licensed premise initially, and I think it was granted after. The licensed premises is still the category one with no music and dancing. I know there's been previous violations for it. As far as that goes, yeah.
Do we know what time consumption is allowed under this license? I know that we restricted outdoor consumption to 10:00 p.m., but if we were to lift that, what would be the hours?
2:00 a.m.
2:00, 2:00 a.m.
Anything else you wanna share with the commission?
Not that I can think of.
Thank you.
If I may, Commissioners, just one, one more point. So, and it sounds like there are still some, some compliance areas that we need to focus on. We will continue to do that through, through training and, and improved management, but we have been compliant with the, with the outside areas, and we certainly have had some issues with people not having their cards on them, and we are trying to address those, and we're hammering that into people. We have meetings where we talk about compliance now, not every week, but we try to meet every week to, you know, to make sure that we're addressing those kinds of issues. And so we do, seems like we still have some, some sort of hangers-on, but we are, we are working hard. working hard to address those issues and make sure that we're complying with the rules of the commission.
And we, we appreciate that, but you're coming here today before us, asking us to lift all of the restrictions that we put on the licensee for various reasons.
Yes, sir, we are. Right, and, and the, the issues that it sounds like we're, we're having are, are not, sort of the big compliance issues that we had before, where we didn't have the right licensed area, and, and we are having issues with, with the outside area. These are the kinds of things that I feel like we can, or that I know that we can continue to address, e-cards, time records, things like that, those are the things that we'll be able to help you on.
And I appreciate you, we appreciate your representation and your efforts for your client, but sit up here. I think you would have a different perspective.
Oh, yes, sir, we understand.
Can we go into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second. Move to second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. We are now in executive session. We're now back on the record. Commissioners, do you have any further questions or type of action for Agenda Item Number Eight?
Yes, Chair. Motion to deny request number two zero dash two zero three two six.
Second.
Then move to second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Eight, request number two zero dash two zero three two six is denied.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Ten, request number one nine dash one six two zero seven.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners, Mike Sweetman for Kavailoa Tavern LLC. And to my right is Moana Lane L A, and he's manager of Kavailoa Tavern.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
This is a three-month review for probationary period, correct?
No commission action is actually required for this one.
Mm-hmm.
It's just a probationary review, which I guess you, was reported in the previous item.
Okay. All right.
So no action needs to be taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
So on the, on the, Agenda Item Number Eight, was that the ninety day trial license, or was that the-
All of, everything that you listed-
Was that the request?
Requesting the following, one, two, three, all denied.
Understood.
Thank you very much. Okay. Commissioners, can I have a type of action on the-
I'm sorry, so we need to go back to nine, request.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Lee is not here. Calling Agenda Item Number Nine, request number two zero dash two zero two eight nine, Island Oshii LLC.
But you are not Mr. Terencey.
No, I'm not, he's off island this evening, so, good evening, I'm Kevin Hanny, K E V I N H A N E Y. I'm the managing member of Island Oshii.
Okay, very good. And can you give us a little explanation as to why?
Well, when, we were supposed, we were here a week or two weeks ago, and at that time, Terry was supposed to say we weren't opening until October, and we needed it delayed, but it slipped his mind.
Yeah, okay, so-
So you're acting, you're asking for the effective date of the temporary license to be September twenty-third of this year?
Correct.
Very good.
Motion to approve, request number two zero dash two zero two eight nine.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Jim, Item Number Nine, request number two zero dash two zero two eight nine is approved.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chair, motion for the adoption of decision in order for Agenda Items eleven through twenty inclusive.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Adoption of decision in order, Agenda Items Number eleven through twenty inclusive are approved. Moving into our adjudication.
Good afternoon, Joyne Lee-
May I, excuse me, Mr. Kiuchi has left?
Yes.
He left? Okay, all right, so we'll just go to the, go ahead, I'm sorry. I wanted to combine Mr. Kiuchi, because we may have a commissioner that may refuse himself, so that we could dispose of those first before we hold anybody else.
Okay. Joyne Lee on the record for the prosecution for today's adjudication.
Thank you very much. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, is that correct?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, Ashley's Restaurants and Lounge.
Hi, my name is Song Song Chou, S O N G S U N C Chou.
Thank you.
Honor about September twenty-one, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee employed Paul Chun in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered with the liquor commission, in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point five A of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Ms. Chun, how would you like to plead?
Guilty.
Motion to accept the plea.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, the guilty plea is accepted, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Ms. Neely?
This is the first violation, I recommend a fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Ma'am, any comments?
No comments.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-one, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-two, Prince Kohio Cruises.
Oh, licensee has requested to continue this matter to next week, August twenty-ninth, because he's out of town this week.
You have any objections?
No objection.
Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-two, Prince Kohio Cruises, to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-two is continued to August twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, Star Sports Bar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Robert Lee, Authorization for Star Sports Bar.
I'll recharge one. Honor about July one, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have an employee duly registered with the liquor commission as a manager or assistant manager of the premises in which he or she is employed, an active charge of the licensed premises, in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point nine A of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Charge two, please.
Honor about July one, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to make time record entries at the time its employee Kyung Soh Batakhan reported on duty and again when the employee went off duty, in violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-eight point four B of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
Charge two.
Honor about, Honor about July one, twenty eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee sold liquor on the premises, which is prohibited upon the expiration of the license, and until that license is renewed and issued by the commission, which constituted a violation of Rule three eighty-two thirty-one point four C of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
And Mr. Lee, if I recall correctly, you said that you were unable to find the owners of this establishment?
They closed the business and shared big operation, but I was able to talk to the niece, and she say, she want me to represent, and whatever the fines they willing to pay, so, they is the plea guilty for that.
When, when was this establishment closed?
They closed end of last year.
So end of two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
And was the license put in safekeeping?
Was, was returned to the liquor commission here, canceled.
It was canceled?
Yeah, yeah, they request for cancel.
As to charge one, sir, how would you like to plead?
Guilty.
Motion to accept the plea for charge one.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, charge number one, the guilty plea is approved.
And as to charge two?
Yes.
Guilty for all?
What?
Guilty for all three charges?
What?
You have three, three violations.
Oh, yeah, two violations.
Motion to accept the guilty pleas for charges two and three.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, charge number two and charge number three, the guilty pleas are accepted.
Ms. Neely, what are your recommendations?
For charge one, this was the first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars. For charge two, this was the first violation, I recommend a fine of two hundred and fifty dollars. And for charge three, this was the first violation, I recommend a fine of five hundred dollars.
Mr. Lee, did you represent to this commission that your client was able to pay these fines?
I believe so, yes.
No, did she tell you that she-
She asked me whether the commissioner's skin gave some abatement on the penalty, but that's, she's very sick, she's over eighty years old, so she's completely out of business, yes.
She's no long, she's no longer in the business at all?
She's no longer in business.
Okay, thank you very much.
My motion is to issue a letter of reprimand for all three charges.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-three, charges number one, two, and three, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you for coming, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-four, Christine's Lounge.
The attorney has, licensee has requested to continue this matter to September twenty-six, twenty nineteen. I have no objection.
Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-four, Christine's Lounge, to September twenty-six, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-four is continued to September twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-five, Aqua Lounge.
This is the same attorney, he requested to continue to September twenty-six, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-five, Aqua Lounge, to September twenty-six, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-five is continued to September twenty-six, two thousand and nineteen. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-six, Silk Lady Lounge.
This attorney is still awaiting discovery and has requested to continue this matter to next week, August twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen. I have no objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-six, Silk Lady Lounge, to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-six is continued to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven, Silk Lady Lounge.
This was, also got a request to continue to August twenty-ninth, twenty nineteen, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-seven, to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-seven is continued to August twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Calling Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, Ataya Thai.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'm the main representative for the side. Hi. To my right is Rochenee Senkowski, R N T C H A N E S E N C K O W S K I, the sole stockholder.
Thank you.
Charge one is, Honor about September ten, twenty seventeen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to allow Honolulu Liquor Commission investigators, Arthur Tupuola and Frederick Cruz, immediate access to every part of the licensed premises for the purpose of making an examination or inspection thereof, or inquiry into the books and records therein, to ascertain whether all conditions of the license and all provisions of Chapter two eighty-one and Chapter two forty-four D of the Hawaii Revised Statutes were being complied with, in violation of Section two eighty-one twenty of the Hawaii Revised Statutes.
How would you like to plead for charge one?
No contest.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge one.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, charge number one, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, charge two, please.
Honor about September ten, twenty seventeen, at approximately two twenty-one A M., in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have the street and/or primary entrances to the licensed premises unlocked during the time customers were on the premises, in violation of Rule three eighty-four seventy-two point two of the Rules of the Liquor Commission of the City and County of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead? Motion to accept the no contest plea for charge two.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight, charge number two, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely, what is your recommendation for charge number one?
For charge number one, this was the first violation, licensee, employees at licensee, the licensed premises refused to let liquor commission investigators in, in spite of the manifying themselves and knocking, and so they eventually did have to leave without being given the right to inspect.
What time is that? Do you have?
This is, this was two twenty-one A M., yes. I recommend a fine of one thousand dollars.
Sir?
I understand what happened, is for some reason, the manager wouldn't let the inspectors in, and the person on the premises was her boyfriend, she's been since.
Okay, can, can we hear from your client? Because obviously, you were not present at the time, right? I want to hear why you blocked our investigator from accessing the liquor premises, which is a part of the rules and the statutes. Can you tell us why?
In that night, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in that, in, in the bar.
So it was the manager at the time?
Yeah. And I'm not in that, that night, I'm not-
Is this person still employed by you?
Is my manager.
Is your manager still working there? The manager that-
But, but handle, yeah.
They're still working there, and they blocked our investigators from coming into your establishment?
I'm not.
This is a very serious violation. When investigators come, you are supposed to have them come in and look at anything that they would like on the licensed premises. So I would like to hear an explanation.
Well, I can add this, the manager's no longer employed there, she was dismissed right away.
The Honor seems to think differently, I don't understand.
I don't think she understands the question about, I mean, in a way.
Okay, so, hold on here.
Oh, yeah, she not work with me anymore.
In all, in all fairness, does she want an interpreter? You've already pleaded, but we can, we can do the, we can do the deliberations on the penalty.
We can do a penalty phase later if she requires a translator, so she can understand what happened, because we want to make sure she understands that this cannot happen again. We do have the authority to suspend or revoke the license, and for this type of violation, it would be warranted. So can you please ask her if she'd like an interpreter?
Yeah. I, it's me in Manan, they not work with me, yeah.
You want somebody that speaks Thai to come to the penalty?
Okay.
Yes, no?
Yes.
Yes?
So we will continue, Agenda Item Twenty-eight, for a penalty, for the penalty phase, when an interpreter can be supplied, for the licensee.
Thai.
Aye.
Okay. And the prosecutor will notify the licensee?
I think I have to make a motion. Motion to continue, Agenda Item Twenty-eight, for the penalty phase, to the next available date.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number Twenty-eight was continued to the next available.
Thank you.
One, one-
Charge one and two.
I'm sorry?
The place is closed, the license-
We understand that, but-
But I mean, if you have to send mail, the mail is coming to my office, if any mail comes out.
You can work that out with the prosecutor. We want to be fair to everybody, that she understands. Right now, we don't think she understands, because we don't understand what she's representing to this commission. So in all fairness, let's have her get some- So in all fairness, let's have her get somebody that can represent her in her native tongue.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's move on to Agenda Item Number 29, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Manchini Ramen.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Matthew Chung, and to my right is William Robillard. Since everybody's spelling R-O-B-I-L-L-A-R-D, and he is a member and manager of the licensee.
Thank you.
If we can, we would waive reading of the charge. We prepare to enter a no contest plea to the charge.
Thank you.
And give our explanation.
Thank you. Motion to accept the no contest plea.
Second. They're moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number 29, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely.
This is the first violation, I recommend a fine of $500.
Members of the Commission, this is a circumstance where the manager didn't pick up the new license for 2019 on the Friday. June 30th was a Saturday, and the investigators were there Sunday, July 1. So if he didn't pick it up Friday, he couldn't pick it up again till Monday, and when the investigators came in, that was his unfortunate reminder that he forgot to get the license. So the only explanation is he wasn't able to pick it up soon enough to post it for the Sunday that happened, for the 1st of July that happened to fall on the Sunday.
Okay, so let me ask this question. Was his 2018 license posted?
Yes.
That was, right?
Right.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
So the next day, he got the license and posted the new one?
Very good.
On Monday.
Yes. And we would also note that Manichi Ramen has been in business five years, and I believe this is the first violation.
For this, yeah, kind of violation.
Well, was there another one?
Yes, there are two others.
What was the last year?
Twenty, one in 2015 and one in 2017.
In either case, we would ask that the members of the Commission, taking into consideration the circumstances and the fact that this was the first violation of this kind, we would ask for either suspension or letter of.
Thank you very much. I think the Commission is ready to rule.
Yes, Chair. Motion to issue a letter of reprimand.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number 29, a letter of reprimand will be issued.
Thank you for coming.
Can do that online early now.
Yeah.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Calling Agenda Item Number 30, Bevy LLC, Ms. Obziana.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Commission, Mia Obziana, on behalf of the licensee. Seated to my right is Christian Seof, S-E-O-F. He is a member of the licensee, and we will waive reading of the charge. And I do apologize to the Commission as well as to Corporation Counsel. We did very belatedly change how we were going to proceed in this matter, and I just informed Ms. Neely not even an hour ago. But we would be requesting a contested hearing, denying the charge. While needed to be for a future date, we do have additional evidence that we would like to submit to Ms. Neely in support of the facts, as my client has to relate them to me. So if the Commission would indulge us in a further continuance to allow us to present that evidence to her, I would appreciate that.
I will note for the record that this would be a third continuance in this matter.
I understand that the witness that we continued it last time for is still on the mainland and has not yet returned to Hawaii.
Do they plan on returning though?
Yes, he begins school next week, I believe Tuesday, and so he's there until Monday. And that's when he will be returning.
Ms. Neely.
Right, I mean, prosecution was prepared for a contested hearing this week until we were told licensee intended to plead no contest, but then today they've changed their mind again, so subpoenas, or the subpoenas for witnesses have already been canceled. I would request that this be the last continuance.
That is so noted for the record. Motion to continue, Agenda Item 30, Bevy LLC, for a contested case to the next.
For the last time.
The last, for the last continuance. And do you have a date certain, Ms. Obziana?
We would be fine with two weeks, but I don't know if Ms. Neely would like more time to review the evidence that we submit to her prior to the hearing?
I have to double check the adjudication schedule.
Okay. That's not a problem.
Next available.
Next available.
Motion to continue for a contested case to the next available date.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number 30 is continued to the next available date.
Thank you.
For a contested hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Calling Agenda Item Number 31, Lucky Belly.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Mia Obziana, on behalf of the licensee. I do apologize, he is not present, because I did receive a call from Ms. Neely informing me that she was planning to dismiss this charge.
That's correct. For charge three, I move to dismiss this charge.
And this was only for charge three, I believe we've already taken care of the first two charges, correct?
Correct.
Motion to dismiss charge three for Agenda Item 31.
Second. Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda Item Number 31, charge number three is dismissed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Neely. Okay, let's move on to other business administrative matters. Do we have any? Meeting is adjourned.